Recording in progress.
Call to order the town council meeting for the town of New Windsor for December 7th, 2022. If everyone would rise and join with me, the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We go by an agenda. Our meetings are recorded electronically. Anyone wishing to have something on tonight's agenda should have had it to the town hall the previous Wednesday by 3:00. Anyone wishing to speak tonight that's not on the agenda, we ask you to sign over there by our town attorney, Michelle Olstrander. Approval of minutes from November 2nd, 2022, 2022 town council meeting, they have been sent out to everybody. Do I hear a motion for approval?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from last month.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Any questions or comments? We have a motion and a second to accept the minutes of the November 2nd, 2022 town council meeting. All those in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So carry. Mayor's report. A lot of meet and greet this month, pretty busy, trying to get things lined up for our next general assembly for funding. Contacted Delegate Rose regarding a meeting with a delegation. Once everybody has sworn in, then she'll be letting us know when a good time for them. Probably one of the most important things this past month was secured Santa Claus for Christmas tree lighting, which I want to say was phenomenal. The Fountain Park, I think, was the ideal place. Safer.
Quieter.
Quieter, lit up. Santa Claus was brought in by fire truck, great music. So, want to thank everybody that participated in getting that all together, Sharon and Kevin with the tree and everything. Sometimes I do come up with some good ideas, so I think that's very good. With that Christmas tree lighting, I did make an announcement, kind of making an executive decision. That is a live tree, so if someone were to want that live tree, which is the very first tree, Christmas tree lighting at the Fountain Park, they would like to have it in their yard, please let someone at town hall know. And if there's multiple families that want it, we'll do a little drawing or something. So, that way, in 25 years, when you come back to the 26th anniversary of the Christmas tree lighting, you can say you have the first tree. So. New Windsor Lions Club Veteran Recognition Dinner. The reason I say that, that's one of the things I chair for the Lions Club. Not only did we recognize the veterans, and, you know, I started last year and this year I continued with passing the microphone around and letting veterans tell their story. I think it's very, sometimes very helpful to them. I think very therapeutic sometimes, so it helps them, but also we get to hear a little bit about history and about some of our local veterans. But the key thing, I think, also was that night Frank Badavich talked about the history of New Windsor and veterans that have been from here. So, I unfortunately did not tape that. I taped the veteran speaking. I should have taped Frank's message, but if the Heritage Committee does something with Frank again, especially with his new book and everything, we will, I would like to either record it or have it recorded because there's a lot of history with veterans going on. Contact the, didn't spell that right, Genesis and Wyoming Incorporated. They own Maryland Midland Railroad, about a footbridge, which we'll go into a little more detail later in Under New Business. Contacted Connor Roberman about the footbridge request, and also with that being in November, we kind of took care of government works for MML. They just kind of coincided. Then I invited Connor to attend our December town council meeting, and he is here. Very proud of him, and I'll talk about that later as well. Attended in United America, which was Governor Hogan's big event, where I thought he would be making an announcement, but he didn't. He's going to wait till next year to make that announcement. But the second video that he showed, I would say, well, would let it go. But there, while there, I had the opportunity to see Secretary David Brinkley of Budget and Management, Secretary James Ports of Transportation, to keep our Streetscape project up and running and hopefully funded. And right now, everybody is pushing everything over to the new administration, so, and the new governor-elect has reached out to Justin Reedy, Senator Justin Reedy, so hopefully there'll be a meeting with him and he'll keep Streetscape on the front burner as well. Also talked to Special Secretary Wendy Peters and Delegate-elect Chris Tomlinson, and conversation with Sheriff DeWes, and we can talk about that a little bit later. Attended the Carroll County Veterans Independence Project's Christmas tree lighting with two commissioner-elects, Kenny Koller and Tom Gordon, and talked to them a little bit about Streetscape as well, so we're doing everything we can on that part. And of course, New Windsor's Christmas tree lighting, met with Town Manager Di, conversation with Granville Hibbert regarding 10 acres just outside of town limits. And, you know, I sent an email to Lee High Cement Company Plant Manager Kent Martin to see what trucking companies they use or transport to cement for the, maybe the amount of diesel fuel. So maybe a grocery store with the incentive of selling diesel fuel to the truckers as they go by because, you know, there would be plenty of room, hopefully, so, you know, outside box thinking. Upcoming events, Senator Cornyn's earmarks briefing. Town Manager Di sent this information to me, I had received it as well, and then also Councilman Huffman's going to be in on that virtual meeting. Speaking of Santa Claus.
Santa Claus, yeah.
The MML chapter dinner tomorrow night, Town Christmas breakfast Saturday, Carroll County Welcome, meet and greet the new commissioners is next week, and State of the County, I think is coming up in, I want to say January, but I can't remember when that is now. So that's my report. So, lot of meet and greet and trying to keep Streetscape on the front burner. So, that's my report. Any questions or comments? Council committees, community enhancement, Councilwoman Griffin Lindeman.
Good evening, everybody. I'm kind of short and sweet this month, so on last Friday, I helped to decorate Fountain Park for the holiday season and for the Christmas tree lighting ceremony, and of course, I attended the ceremony, and also I took care of getting Rebecca Price and her friend to come and be the musical entertainment, and so thank you so much to them, and like the mayor was saying, it was a great event, and I think everybody did a fabulous job. And I want a special thank you to Dana because she had all these crafts for the kids to do, and she took care of hot chocolate and cookies and all kinds of great stuff, so it wouldn't have gone off well without Dana. The other thing I wanted to mention was that, well, I was going to say, if nobody did decide they wanted the Christmas tree, there is a spot in town that we could put it if you're interested, and that a tree was taken down at the tot lot, the Lions Club Park, and that might be a spot we could put it if nobody else wants it, just throwing that out there. And then in January, if we are still looking to get an artificial tree for that spot, I can start pricing in January because the prices would be a lot better than waiting until next year, like, to get it, because they'll have some stock that they didn't sell from this year, and maybe I can get a good price on that. That's what I was told by the different vendors.
You might have some discussion on that one, because I think there's a council member that wants live trees every year.
Who might that be?
Anyway, anyway, start looking and, you know, we can, we can discuss it, but I'm a live tree guy myself, so.
Yeah, I like the live tree. I mean, I just try, you know, I can do either way, so you just let me know what you, what you want there. And other than that, I just want to say happy holidays to everybody and a happy new year to everybody as well.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Public Works, Councilman Huffman.
Hi, good evening, everyone. There's been lots going on with Public Works over the last month. Leaf pickup has been a big one. To date, they've already filled five dumpsters worth of leaves. They anticipated that two more dumpsters will be required to finish the job. Public Works will be picking up leaves through 16 December this year, and we appreciate the residents' cooperation with bagging their leaves. They have, Public Works has also been finishing up the final cleanup of the town parks. As you all may recall, in November, there was a stream cleanup conducted at Dickerson Run. Public Works picked up a full dump trailer worth of debris from the cleanup, which included tires, trash, and yard waste type items. Public Works oversaw the removal of bees from the Old Town Hall building. They continue to fill in potholes. They've worked with Rodkey Electric to test the circuit for the Christmas wreaths. The circuit itself checked out fine and will support extension at either end. However, some of the receptacles on the poles need service or replacement, so there'll be more coming on that in the near future. In preparation for the winter weather, they had 40 tons of salt delivered. This year, just like everything else, there was a increase in the price of the salts. It increased by $10 a ton, bringing it to about $89 a ton this year. They worked with condens to install temporary concrete barriers on the side leading into the salt barn. As you know, one of our long-term projects is to replace that salt barn, but in the meantime, they've put some temporary concrete barriers. This will contain the salt as it's dumped and loaded into the barn. Public Works is also looking to use those type of concrete barriers possibly to shore up the walls of the yard waste dumpster area. They decorated the town park for the Christmas holidays, as we've already mentioned, and want to thank Public Works and Councilwoman Griffin Lindeman for decorating the tree. Thought the park looked great. Public Works had to install some additional outlets in the park to meet the need. They are working with our paving contractor who started work today. You'll hear more about that, I'm sure. And Christmas tree pickup will be January 5th, 12th, and the 19th this year. January 5th, 12th, and the 19th. The planning commission did not meet in November due to some unexpected cancellations. Our next scheduled meeting will be January 23rd in 2023.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? All right. Water and Sewer, Councilman Hall.
All right, so I just have one thing to report for water sewer, and that was on the 23rd, so the day before Thanksgiving, we had a few reports of cloudy water, so Public Works went around. Within an hour, they were going around to several residents and found no cloudy water. They took samples around town, and everything seemed to check out fine. They reviewed past days of reports, MES reports, SCADA reports, a whole list. Director Myers is still, encourages any resident to call town hall. That way, he could take a note of it. It could be documented and then investigated. But water samples remain within the normal ranges, everything is good there. So, again, just call if your water's cloudy or anything suspicious, just give them a call. And then the water sewer project status will be given during old business in a little bit. Another thing is I attended the tree lighting ceremony, and I'd like to thank the Public Works and Councilwoman Sharon, Gribbin, Lindeman. They spent all Friday. I think you guys were out there probably from the time the sun came up to the time the sun came down. So, that, it was a huge success. I know my kids loved it. I think everybody that attended just had a phenomenal time. It was probably the best one ever. And then the last thing is the town hall audiovisual still is coming along. We have some supply chain issues, and that's why the microphones are not plugged into the wall. They're still taped to the ground. So while we work out that, there's a missing part that still is in back order due to the supply chain. Once that gets worked out, they'll be plugged right into the wall. We won't have all these cords everywhere. But already, I would just like to note that the audio improvements have already provided two-way communication with residents and remote attendees. We were able to share documents up on the screen, and then also we expanded coverage to not only Zoom, but CMC also does Facebook, YouTube, and cable TV live, as well as rebroadcast it throughout the week. So special thanks to CMC for being able to do that, and we look forward to finishing the job completely. So, that's my report.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
So, if somebody's having a problem with their water, refresh my memory, and they call the town hall and the town hall's closed, is there a message that gives them a number to report a problem with water?
So, if town hall's closed or if nobody answers.
Because that was the holiday, obviously.
It'll always, they give you a number, it rings, there's a phone tree, that'll, it'll go down a list. You will get somebody from that number. So just as a good reference, just always call town hall, and then if town hall's closed, it'll give you an emergency number to call, and you can call that, and then Public Works will be right out to investigate.
That's what I thought, and I just wanted you to say that because I know that, I think it was either your emails or Wayne's, mentioned people reporting it on Facebook, and the town Facebook page is monitored, like, I get it on my phone when somebody posts something, but I might not see it. So that's not a great place to ask a question. And then the other Facebook page, the unofficial one, that, we'll never see that. So if you have a problem, the best thing to do is just go ahead and call town hall.
And that way, it's also documented. Every water sewer, Director Myers always keeps a great log, so he would appreciate that, just so, say you have 10 residents and they're all in a central location, he can track that easily if they call, and then he knows the problem area. If it's distributed throughout town, he might want to know that because it could be some other issue. But always call, always call, that's the main thing.
Thank you. Public Safety, Councilman Cornyn.
Good evening. Thank you to the folks that came out tonight. We have a nice crowd, it's always good to see. The town is in good, safe hands, and I'm going to get into that. I'll make a comment about the safe hands that help to keep New Windsor a nice place to live. Before I say that, I want to say, I know we mentioned about the Dickinson Run cleanup last month during our work session, but I wanted to say, publicly citizens, we have a beautiful park over by Dickinson Run, and unfortunately, people do still litter there, and, you know, like Councilman Hoffman said, that, you know, we took, Public Works took a bunch out of there, a bunch of trash out of there, but I did participate in it. Next year, be nice if we could, you know, have more folks there. I'm not complaining, I'm saying, I think we probably should publicize it a little bit better because it was actually a pretty good turnout, and, you know, I thought it was fun. We were there for a couple hours. I think we were there from 8:00 to 12:00 or 9:00 to 12:00, but it was an event, the event was fruitful in the sense that we were able to pull a lot of stuff out of there, and I actually got to meet some folks, so. I think that's a pretty cool community event, just like when we do the beautification of the parks in the spring, so maybe we can make it a dual effort where we're beautification all the way around in the fall and in the spring. All right, back to public safety. I'm going to defer specifics of our public safety to our Deputy Calusi and our Fire Chief Welker, but I just want to take a moment to say, Deputy Calusi, it's been wonderful working with you. I know we're going to talk about this a little bit more, but he does a wonderful job with our community, and it shouldn't be taken for granted. I mean, public safety is, I'm not a law enforcement person, but I certainly am a citizen of New Windsor, and where I raised my family and where you all frankly raise your families is important to me in how it's a place that I've chosen to live for over a quarter century, and we have kids that I respect and care about, and, you know, citizens as well, so thank you, sir, and I'll leave it at that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Economic Development, Councilwoman Schultz.
So, I don't have too much to say. I do want to just, I have to go on the Christmas tree train and say thanks to everybody because that was a great event, and I also just wanted to mention that because I do monitor, I know Dana saw these through the Facebook page, we had a lot of really positive comments from residents, which was nice, and most of the ones who commented were new residents, which was really nice to see new folks getting involved in town, so welcome to all those people for your first event perhaps. And I also wanted to point out that the tree that the mayor's talking about also happens to be the tree that we use for the 225th anniversary of the town, so it's not only the first tree, it's also the 225th anniversary tree, so it's got some special meaning if somebody wants it in their yard or wherever. On the economic development front, just remind everybody that you've got a couple more days to participate in the Carroll County Downtown's Passport Program, which is a shop mall adventure that helps us promote businesses throughout the county. There's several hundred businesses in there. It runs through the 11th. Completed passports can be brought here to town hall or any town hall, or dropped off at any public library, and they have to be done by the 13th, and then they'll be entered in the drawing on the 16th, where there are several $100 gift cards that can be used at any of the several hundred businesses, and it doesn't cost the businesses anything, so it's a fun project. This is just my monthly reminder that HSP has funding for utilities, especially this time of year, some folks have trouble paying their utility bills, they also could help with our water bill. And I have something that's going to go in announcement, so I'll just hold off on that.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. Any questions? And Councilman Cornyn, where did that Christmas tree come from?
That would come, that is from Sewell's Farm in Tawny Town, so they are the suppliers of the tree.
Thank you. Town managers' report.
Good evening, everybody. If it's okay with the mayor and council, I'm going to jump down to the first item under new business and let Mike, with Mike Sampson with Zelenkovsky, there are auditors, judges, overview, and some financial highlight. So, Mike, I'll turn it over to you.
Chair there by the mic. Chair there by the mic.
Thank you, Gary. Thank you, Gary.
You're welcome.
So, good evening to the Honorable Mayor and Town Council. Happy to hear, happy to see tonight to present the audit presentation for the town's June 30th, 2022 financial statements. I'd like to thank Gary and Dana for all their help and help us complete the audit. The audit was filed within the required timeframes by November 1st, as the state requires. So briefly, I want to just want to go over some required communications to the council and also some brief financial highlights. So as far as some required communications, I just wanted to communicate, we had no difficulties in performing the audit. We had no disagreements with management over any accounting or auditing principles. We obtained the required representations from town's management prior to issuing the financial statements. To our knowledge, there were no consultations with other accountants about any accounting or auditing matters. And something new this year, we're required now to communicate if we identify any significant risks when we do the audit. Some significant risks that we did identify were management override controls, improper revenue recognition, and as far as the proper adoption of GasB87 leases. So all those, we deem these significant risks, we designed our audit procedures to mitigate those risks. So it's not something new we've done. We do this every year with the audit, we're just required to communicate that to the We did have some material journal entries that we proposed. That was really related to, you know, capital assets and also just adjusting some debt balances and the fund balance. That was similar to prior years. And that was all the required communications, and now I just wanted to go over some brief financial highlights, and if anyone has any questions, please feel free to jump in. So far as our opinion, that's what you pay us for. We issued a clean or unmodified opinion on the town's financial statements. The opinion, if you compare it to prior years, might be a little different. The news, they had new standards, which we just basically moved the information around. It's the same information, just really in a different order. So that's the highest form of assurance we can provide, and we issued that in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. So the first page, I really wanted to point a few items out would be page 10 of the financial This is your statement on net position as of June 30th, 2022, so these are the balances as of that point in time, and you'll see the statements organized into, you know, assets, your liabilities, and also your net position. And you'll see three columns. The governmental activities column is basically the general fund, and also the American Rescue Plan funds are also included in there, and your business type activities are the water and sewer fund. So you got on your net position, that's really what's left after you have your, you take your assets less your liabilities. You'll see your net position for your governmental activities at the bottom of the page was 3.2 million. Of that 3.2 million, 1.3 million was unrestricted, so that's a healthy, healthy net position for the general fund. If you go over to your business type activities, the water sewer fund had a total net position of 10 million approximately. 3 million of that was related is unrestricted, which can be used to, you know, fund any obligations of that fund. So that's, again, that's a healthy, a very good net position. The other two items I wanted to find out, point out, you'll see under restricted cash, under governmental activities, you had $679,934. I just wanted to point out that is the American Rescue Plan funds that were unspent as of June 30th, 2022, and correspondingly, we have unearned revenue, if you look in that column, of 679,934, an offset to that. The other change over the prior year for the governmental activities was the town had to adopt GasB87, this year was leases. So they basically changed how they are accounting for operating leases going forward. So we did record a lease receivable, you will see, of $673,712, and we deferred inflow from leases, which is an offset to of 664,000. That's really related to the town's three leases with your telecommunications providers for placing attendance on the towers. So going. And you'll reduce that as you receive revenue in the future, and I'll show you, I'll show you later on, there's a schedule in the notes to the financial statements, which will give you a little more information. That's all I wanted to point out on this page. If you turn to page, the next page, page 11, this is your statement of activities as of June 30th, 2022, so this is really what occurred during the year, your revenues and expenses. If you go towards the bottom of the page, you'll see, I wanted to talk about your change in net position for both your governmental activities and your business type activities. Governmental activities, you had a positive change in net position from the prior year of 416,394. That was primarily due just to revenue, you know, revenues in excess of expenditures in the general fund. If you go, and if you, if you look over to your business type activities, you had a 1,122,241 increase in net position for the year for your water sewer fund. That was primarily due to increased water and sewer connection fees collected by the town, so that was the reason for that large increase this year. Is there any, the next statement I would like to point out, I'd highlight a few items, would be page 12. That is your balance sheet. So this is the governmental funds, this is a little more on the current resource focus. Basically, it's your short-term assets and liabilities, doesn't include the town's capital assets or your, or the debt. And I wanted to point out, the general fund had a, if you look down towards the bottom of your fund balance, had a 1.3 million unassigned fund balance as of year end. So that's a, as I pointed out before, that's a healthy fund balance, that's over 100% of your expenditures from, from June 30th for the year into June 30th, 2022. Another couple items I wanted to, I just wanted to go to the notes quickly, page 34. There's a wealth of information in the notes to go over, if you want to read them, it's definitely worth your while. I just wanted to point out the long-term debt footnote, so this gives your, basically your debt for the governmental activities and your business type activities. So you can go down to the bottom of the page, you can So, you can get on the bottom of the page, you can, you know, it's a handy schedule to have. It really tells you your principal and interest payments over the next five years and in five-year increments over that. And the next page on 35 would be your business type activities. So, you did, you did pay off four debt issues this year. So, you did see, so there's a reduction in your, in your debt for the water and sewer fund. On the subsequent page, which is page 36, this is the new note this year for leases. There's a schedule there. You can see your futureable principal and interest payments you're gonna receive over the life of those leases. Unless there was any questions, those are the, the financial highlights I did want to point out to the council.
Just two things. I mean, is there anything that can make life easier for Dana reporting or anything? Everything's, she's doing it as top-notch as she can. I mean, anything that could help her make her life easier?
Yeah, I think for the close process, like at the end of the year, just for booking, you know, your accruals and identifying your capital, you know, your capital purchases during the year. You know, it may, it may be worthwhile to, you know, have somebody to, you know, help them with, with that process.
If you need help, let us know. And bottom line, town's in good financial shape.
Yes.
That's what I'd like to hear. Any questions from the council? Thank you very much. Have a safe trip home.
Thank you.
And Dana, thank you. And Gary?
Yep.
Dana, I know this is a big, big task that you have to face every year.
This is our first one.
Okay. Well, from now on. So, this was the easiest one then. So, thank you. Been, been, been a good company to work with. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. And thank you, Dana. All right, Gary.
Okay. So, for the Maryland 31 Waterline Replacement Project, the bids submitted and opened December 2nd. We had three contractors miss bids. And if you can pull up that spreadsheet, it'll show you those bids, bid tabs. We will be evaluating those bids in the next two to three weeks. The town staff and GMB, we've, I'm working on an evaluation ready sheet. And then GMB is putting together an Excel sheet, check the math and the numbers, and then they will also be checking references. We're looking to award a contract, provide bid approval at the January 4th council meeting, and then issue the notice to proceed January 6th. Actual waterline construction expected to begin spring of '23, depending on weather and availability. And then, we, like we've mentioned before, will be scheduled informational meetings once the word of the contract is entered. So, that's it on the waterline. The vacant public works maintenance worker position. We interviewed four candidates, both two times each. And one candidate was more qualified for the utility and public works maintenance assistant position and was offered that position. And the interview committee of Director Myers, Supervisor Togary, Treasurer Mangus, and myself did not think the other candidates interviewed were the right fit. So, a collective decision was made to be advertised for this position after the first year in 2023. As I mentioned, the utility public works maintenance assistant position, an offer was made to Tyler Yager, and he accepted that. And Tyler will be starting December 14th. Feeling this position will help Director Myers directly and Public Works in general. Let me see here. The 2022 Roadcase Project, CP mobilized yesterday, and a meeting was held to go over the limits. Door hangers were distributed Friday, December 2nd. Coons and additional signage were posted on 12th, 6th. Director Myers has been in contact with three local businesses on Lower Church, Lehigh, and also local farmers. And they began milling on Lower Church today, just above the railroad track. And the stone base was in excellent condition, so that's good news. Don't have to put in any GAB in this section. And they started base paving on the one lane, and then they're going to mill the other side more and put in base paving and surface paving on that side, and then finish up that section final service on Friday, weather permitting. Again, the weather and the conditions of the stone base will determine how much paving gets done this year. And then, in the spring, as needed. And very well may only do it for Lower Church Street this year. We're getting into the holidays, and the weather is, is much more hard to predict. So, we'll have to just see how that goes. Possible money source for purchase of generators for water facilities. Town's water supply source facilities do not have backup generator power. Public Works and Town Manager are gonna pursue getting generators for Bowersock, Main Spring, and Hillside Wells. Circuit Rider Rounds is looking into grants and other options, funding, and will also be reaching out to Carroll County Emergency Management Manager Valerie Hawkins. One option we do have is ARPA money to use as needed. I put some information there. We received a total of 1,377,392 of funds, and the date we've used, 38,640, which leaves 1,328,752 remaining. So, my question is, does the council have any objections to using ARPA funds as needed to purchase generators for water supply source facilities?
I don't see a problem with that, but I, Valerie Hawkins at the county, I know there was money for, usually for backup generators for water facilities at one time, I think. I'm not sure if it was through her or not, but I would check with them first, and that way, we could move that money somewhere else.
Sure.
Just, just as, on an as-needed basis, as a last resort, if we're looking at, look at every other option we can. Valerie is one of those.
Gary, if I recall, we had ARPA funds for some of the other water and sewer projects.
Pump stations.
The pump stations. And I don't remember, we hadn't used it all. There was some money that was still available, but I think maybe when we go over all those projects again, maybe we can relook at that.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. I'd rather look at our to-do list and then decide.
We'll be looking at that.
New business.
Yeah.
Thank you. So, lastly, my report, rental housing application. Ornance 100318 was introduced. A public hearing was held. It was passed November 19th of 18 and took effect December 10th of 2018. The Ornance created Chapter 148, which was added to New Windsor Town Code. Purpose of the chapter is to encourage responsible ownership and management of rental housing within the town, particularly as a public health, safety, general, and economic vitality is regularly impacted. Chapter 148, Article 2, it's the licensing requirement, which enables the town to create the requirements for licensing. In March of '21, a draft rental housing application was created and discussed, but never finalized, the question is huge. So, we want to revisit, review, and discuss the application. And you can, I put that in tonight's forward, rental housing application draft. So, if you can take a look at that, we should revisit that and put it in play if we can. There's some things we want to take a look at. At this before, we were debating about whether we can ask for a list of tenants in a rental unit. And Michelle, is there anything else you want to point out?
No, that was my, Director Myers was also concerned about the requirement to give updates on lead paint. So, so we're looking into both of those issues. It's, it's really more a matter of just revisiting it and getting it rolling. Everything here and in the rest of the world sort of came to a stop two and a half years ago, and we're trying to recharge our batteries on that. But I think those were the only issues, Gary.
You want to put this on a work session, the, let everybody read it again?
Yeah, we can get it on the agenda for the December work session.
All right.
That's it for my report, unless anybody has any questions.
Any questions for Town Manager? All right. Public Works Director?
He is taking a much-needed break. He was had a long day today with the paving.
All right.
And tomorrow and Friday is, so he's not.
All right. Community Deputy?
The Sheriff's Office, between the dates of November 1st to November 30th, responded to 46 calls for service within the town limits. Out of those calls for service, only one required a report, which was the following. On October 13th, at approximately 7:00 a.m., deputies responded to 200 block of Main Street in reference to a check welfare. Upon arrival, it was discovered that the person was unable to fully care for themselves and was later transported to Carroll Hospital Center, which case was closed. On other notes, there's no easy way to say this, but effective tomorrow, December 8th, I will be involuntarily transferred from my current position as the community liaison for New Windsor and Union Bridge and have been reassigned to a patrol squad. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve the citizens, businesses, and town council, and to have worked beside the town employees of New Windsor since October of 2018. During my short time here, I have made several acquaintances, as well as friends, and of course, some enemies within the town. However, this didn't hinder me from finding solutions to the problems that individuals were having. We have shared both the highs and the lows during that time, which will travel with me to the next chapter in my life. Some of the enjoyable points were the time spent mingling with citizens at Music on the Main, the holiday tree lightings, the firemen's carnivals, and of course, the planning and organizing of the annual National Night Out events. I will always remember the citizens I was able to successfully assist in getting into and transporting them to the addiction treatment centers, and will always remember the citizens that we have lost along the way. I will remember working alongside individuals that I trained or charged while they completed the community service projects, with the most memorable moment was when, when one of the young juveniles who was completing the community service project stated, "Wonder what I can do next, so that I can do more community service with you." I laughed and said, "I don't think you got the point." However, you're always welcome to just come hang out with me in the future without getting into trouble. Overall, I feel that New Windsor is a great place to live, work, and play, and I hope that my years of service here have helped to build a stronger community. Once again, it's truly, have been an honor, both an honor and a privilege to work here in town, and I will truly miss everyone. As always, stay calm. Be kind to one another. And lastly, I hope that everyone has a safe and healthy holiday season.
I'm gonna let the council say a couple words, and then I'll finish, and then we have something else planned for next month, so. Is your public safety? Well, I'll just reiterate what I said before, but I'll, more specifically, man, how, you know, how hard you worked on National Night Out. You don't do anything half-speed. And frankly, I don't know where you find the hours to do it. We're certainly gonna miss you. And I certainly hope that as a result of you moving on, number one, I hope you do, I know you're gonna be successful in whatever you, you find yourself in, serving the community. But I hope we, I hope there, and this is public, I hope there's not a detriment to you leaving, frankly, because nobody puts in the time that you do. And I'm really, I'm not happy about that. I don't know what I can do about that. I don't know. But as far as you're concerned, I wish you well, because you're certainly deserving of it. You have the best intentions at heart for the community, and I saw it right off the bat. And like I said, I don't know how you do it, you know. So, best wishes to you.
Thank you.
I just want to say, I think you've done a fabulous job since you, since I've been working with you. And I especially want to point out that when we had our Town Cleanup Day last spring, you had so many kids there who were working off community service hours, and what a difference it made to have them there and becoming a part of the community. I mean, what a great service that is, and what a great way to teach these kids, you know. I mean, that was fabulous. And I've just been really impressed by all of the things you've done, and I just want to wish you the best of luck in, in your future endeavors, and I hope that, you know, Carroll County's not that big. We should run into you again.
I'll be around. Well, Brian, you're gonna hear lots of the same kind of things of what a good officer you are and that everyone wishes you the best. But I think the, the, the town will feel a loss from not having you here. The acquaintances that you have made, the friendships that you have built with, with all of us will sorely be missed throughout the community. And, and I will say, the service that we got was over the top. I personally had an issue in my driveway, and I received a phone call about it to make sure that, hey, saw this, thing's okay there. You know, you just don't get that, that kind of service. And that's, that's what the small town's all about, and you were a perfect fit for this small town, and we appreciate all that you do, all that you did. And I know we wish you the best as well.
Oh, Brian. As the mother of a police officer, I know how, you know, it's, it's, in today's world, it's a really hard job, because police officers are not held in the esteem that they should be. And I don't know if you've experienced any of that, but my guess is that you have. So, that's a whole nother layer to a job that's already very dangerous. And, you know, I think sometimes people think, oh, you're in a small town, there's nothing to worry about. But I know, because we're friends and we've talked, that there's been a lot of times when you have been in danger. And the reason that we are not is because you've been here. And I have your phone number, so I will still call you. But I hope that whoever comes here knows that he or she has big shoes to fill, and that he or she will call you and get advice. And I hope they watch this broadcast and hear about all you've done, because it's kind of like all the other jobs in this town. People just have no idea how much it is, how much work it is, and how much you put into it. So, thank you so much, because we're a better place because you were here.
Thank you.
I would just like to reiterate exactly the same sentiment that Councilman Hoffman said. I would just like to reiterate exactly, uh, the same sentiment that, uh, Councilman Hoffman said. I've had, in the past, I've, I've had issues with false alarms with my alarm company. I've had issues in town and, and I've never seen an officer call back and, and make sure that they verify that the issue's solved, um, and keep giving those calls back to make sure everything's great. I've never, never felt safer, um, than I am under you. And, and I just can't believe the amount of hours with National Night Out. Deputy Calusi always made sure that he gave the volunteers gift bags. It's just that, that dedication to the, to the town, I don't think anybody can match, and we're surely going to miss you.
I don't even know where to begin. You know, I think back over the years, from the time I first came on the council in seventy-nine to today, we probably have had eight or ten different types of law enforcement from state police to our own, to, to the county's sheriff's office. And when, uh, Mark left us, we all said, nobody's going to be able to take his place and do as well as he did. He proved, proved everybody wrong. And I've always said, even with Mark, but with you here tonight, that it wasn't just a master deputy position to you. It was the town's police chief. That's how you took this job. It wasn't that you were assigned from a county agency to be here. It's you wanted to be here. And you wanted to make a difference, and you did. You've heard everything tonight, I could echo that multiple times. One thing people don't know is probably in the years that you've been here, I don't know how many times I said, submit a bill to the town for what you bought. And I doubt if you ever did. You took money out of your own pocket for the safety of our residents. You're not going to find that too many places. We've talked about National Night Out. You took that from what I thought was a high level to twice the high level. With the people coming, the vendors, the food, that was your baby. And I hope you still have some play in that in some way, shape, or form. Hopefully, the next, next man up will, will talk to you and say, hey, what did you do? Because you did it right. You did it the right way. And that's one thing you did for the town in Windsor, you did things the right way. I invited the sheriff to come to our January town council meeting. He's going to bring his staff and the new officer, and I want you here that night. Okay? And, uh, Brian, wherever you're going, the people are going to be safer. And you truly, as Councilwoman Schultz said, and I think this is the purpose of a public servant, to leave things better than you found them. And you did that. You have been a good and faithful servant, sir. And on behalf of the council, staff, and residents, we thank you, and God bless you, and safe travels in the future. Thank you. West Carroll Rec Council?
Yes, so I, I did reach out to them. They are struggling to, um, fill positions. They still don't have a, a New Windsor liaison position. But the, the issues are still the same, that, um, they cannot, they're limited. They're going to make, their basketball program is continuing, I did hear that. But they're, it's a tough challenge because they're finding limited access to, um, facilities. So I don't know how we resolve that. But, um, still no, no representation, and that's all they really have is i- issues with access. I know that we're going to touch base on, uh, um, the memorandum of occupancy. That's going to be another item that we talk about, but I did take a look at that and I find it favorable, so I'll reiterate that later.
Thanks, sir. Fire Chief? Chief Walker?
Calls from the month of November, forty-three fire calls, seventy-nine EMS calls, year-to-date, three hundred and eighteen fire calls, and eight hundred and seventy-five EMS calls. Take time, take care of yourself, cut down on the holiday stress, take time to relax, always be safe, candles, decorations, and children. From the New Windsor Fire and Hose Company Number One, we wish you all a happy and safe holiday season. Uh, I'd like to take the opportunity to say it's been a pleasure to be the Fire Chief these past three years. I will not be seeking reelection this coming year, and will be stepping back to the position of captain. Sorry, uh, Brian stole all the thunder. Crimer will be the Fire Chief next year, and, uh, he'll do an excellent job. So, thank you all.
And before you leave, I want to thank you for attending meetings or sending me your reports in a timely manner so that, uh, people continue to know what's, what you guys are doing. As, you know, you, we have, uh, Santa Claus going out and about, and that's a, that's a huge thing. I'm, I, I want to say New Windsor was one of the first, probably not the very first, but one of the first around this area that I think was doing that.
Long time.
Yeah, and, uh, you know, Chief Walker and I have talked along with, uh, um, Chief Elect, uh, Crimer. And if he can't make it, um, he'll have somebody in his place or send me a report as well. So, um, we, we, you know, I instead extended the invitation to other officers, and you may see Byron back here, so.
I'm, I'm, I'll be back as Citizen Walker, just to give you guys my. It might, we might have a different, uh, way to get back and forth.
I have a gavel here, sir. But, uh, you know, you heard Councilwoman Schultz talk about the history of the birthday. I just want to talk about a little anniversary. And I'm sure this is on the top of your list, but this is the history of the New Windsor Fire and Hose Company Number One. On December second nineteen oh eight, the citizens of New Windsor held a meeting at the request of the Burgess and Commissioners for the purpose of organizing a fire company. At this meeting, it was decided to call the company by the name of New Windsor Fire Company. But on December seventh nineteen oh eight, an anniversary tonight, the name was changed to the New Windsor Fire and Hose Company Number One. So, just a little history there. So, many, many years ago, our forefathers saw the need and for safety. So, just a little, little tidbit there. Treasuries Report? All right. Again, thank you for that hard work, especially your first year. I know it's probably a learning experience, but having, I know you have to pull out records and everything they want, so thank you. Water and Sewer Billing Clerk?
Hi, everybody. Everybody? Um, I, short report. Back on the November twenty-first, I sent out seventy-six late notices. Um, a lot of them have already been paid, and there will be no turnoffs for this quarter.
Very good, thank you.
Um, I have nothing to report, um, but I want to tell everybody to have a happy holiday.
Thank you. Thank you. Lee High Update, uh, I don't think anything's here. Uh, under new business, Connor Roberman. Like to read a letter I received. Basketball Court Pathway. Hi, Mayor, my name is Connor Isaac Roberman. I am writing you a letter about the basketball court next to the fire station. Most can easily walk here, but some just can't. The kids that play on the basketball court live pretty close to it. But kids on Athley Ridge Road still live close, but you have to walk through the woods and can get injured or get poisoned, ivy. I'm big with sports and I still can't get to the court safely. I'm asking you to get someone to make a pathway through the woods and a bridge over the train tracks. This would help a lot to the kids. Other kids love this idea too, and my parents, actually, my parents, actually, my parents are the ones who gave me the idea. We would love this, Mayor. Please make the best decision you can and make Athley Ridge kids more happy than we were before. From Connor Isaac Roberman. Now, I just, you know, I don't even know where to begin on this one too. Many times, people want to say how to make New Windsor better, but they don't show up here. They don't step up to the plate. This young man did it the right way. Dad and mom, you should be very proud. As Mayor, I'm very proud. And actually, that's why I ju- I reached out to Genesee and, um, what was it? Genesee? Wyoming, thank you, Railroad. And they, they got back to me real quick. Someone transferred me over to the emergency, uh, section. And I told them it wasn't an emergency, maybe to Connor it is, but, but those folks gave me someone else's phone number, and then they, they followed up with a phone call. This is, if you're not familiar, Athley Ridge and over to the basketball courts below the fire hall, you have to cross railroad tracks. Well, walking that is not safe, and I would not recommend it for anyone. A footbridge, I don't think is the greatest thing because it's going to bring more, it's going to attract more people to the railroad tracks, even if they do use the footbridge. However, Genesee, Wyoming was not against it. But I think it might be cost prohibitive, uh, especially when we go to, um, look for grants. I'm not sure a footbridge would fall under a recreational type, type of grant, even though it kind of, you really would be pushing it. However, and I've, I've, I had a nice conversation with Connor and his mom, so he's, he's well aware of all this. And what I said, and I, you know, I would leave this up to the public works guys and staff, whether or not there's room over, um, below the pump station as you go in for a basketball court. Um, I think that might be, it'd be safer, closer. Now, and I, I explained this, it would, might be in a floodplain, which you can build something like that so that water continues to flow over, would be times where you might not be able to play on it, uh, because of the rain and the water. Now, I'm not sure how wet that area gets, and I'm not saying that's the best area, or it's, if it's even doable. Maybe if we just even have a half a court there or something, that you can still shoot baskets and dribble half-court or something. So, you know, um, we're going to look at it. There's grant money out there, program open space. Gary, are we due this coming year? Year?
Yes, I believe we are, and Mike will be putting it in the year for twenty twenty-three.
And there's also playground.
Natural resources, that's a hundred percent funding. So, you know, we can, we can take a look at that as well.
We can take a look at that as well.
You know?
And, uh, you know, we'll.
We're going to look into it.
We're going to look into it.
Mr. Roberman, do you have any questions or comments, like, say something?
Questions or comments?
What grade are you in? Fifth, fifth grade? You know, I mean, we hear the negative on Facebook because of the way that things are. And, and the adults, and I told him and his mom, you know, they don't show up to town council meetings. A fifth grader, at the encouragement of his mom and dad, but wrote a letter, I invited him here, and he showed up. That's awesome.
Good job, Connor.
That is, that is, that is a good citizen. That's what you're supposed to do. So, um, we'll, we'll take a look at that. If you want to look in that area and see whether or not something like that is doable. We do have land, um, over on the other side of the road, but then we still have the issue of having to cross the road. So I, I don't really want to do that with the, you know, over there by the, um, skate park. But I think in that area, um, we already have the disc off. Whether or not we can incorporate a little basketball court, I don't think it would be that expensive. But, you know, everything else is going up, but, you know, maybe we can get the, a local company in Union Bridge to donate cement for concrete. I think this would be a great public relations opportunity for them as well. And, um, I just hope everybody hears about you, Connor. I really do, I mean, um, so, any closing comments? Nope? Are you ready to go home now? Yeah. All right, well, thank, thank you, and I think he deserves a big round of applause. Hope you, you tell everybody, um, that you attended a town council meeting, your name was on the agenda, read your letter, and stay tuned, see what happens in the future. So, um, like I say, I'm not sure what other areas might be over there. I know the Totlot took most of the spare land up there, but, uh, we'll, we'll take a look, look there, so. And, um, your mom can get ahold of me, um, if you want to call, she has my phone number. So, want the progress or anything, so, um, this, this would probably, knowing it was this letter for me, but it will most likely go into a grant application because it's a safety issue, and that usually bumps grants up when they score grants. So, you're doing your job, buddy. Thank you. All right, thank you. Yeah.
Say thank you, and I really appreciate you reaching out to him and your engagement with youth. And, um, you know, reading the letter and reaching out meant a, meant a lot.
Yeah, um, his, his mom, I didn't get right back to him because there wasn't a phone number or anything here. So I reached out through social media to his mom, and apparently he was going out to look in the mailbox for a postcard or something for me. So, um, you know, stay tuned, um, you're doing things the right way. And, and how old are you? Ten? So, I'll be retired, so then you can run for mayor if you want. Well, thank you, Connor, appreciate it. All right, Gary, try to top that one with fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget review.
I'm not even going to try. So it is that time of year, um, I prepared the, uh, FY twenty-four budget review schedule. It's in the folder, uh, for tonight, um, so we're going to be starting that, um, you know, starting that here, uh, the end of December, beginning of January, getting into the budget, so, just a quick note on that.
And that, now, with that, where are we with, uh, Water and Sewer Study? Rate study? Study?
Uh, I had a meeting with, uh, the two, two folks from, uh, Circap. They were doing, um, they took a couple of days to travel, uh, sections of the state that they are, they're working in, and they stopped in to, uh, Town Hall, and we had a, Colleen and I had a good meeting with those folks, and, uh, they're, they're, uh, have everything they need and are aware of our, our budget schedule. And, uh, we should be, we should be getting, uh, some information from them, uh, relatively soon. They'll, they'll, they'll submit a draft. First, we can take a look at that, and get copies to everybody, and then anything we want to tweak or add or include or not include, they can, they can take it from there. So, they're, they're working on it, and, um, so we should be, we should be good with the schedule on that.
Water and Sewer Capital Projects Update?
All right, if you can pull that up, that's a, a couple of pages. Just more stuff here. So Councilwoman Schultz requested an update and I'm sure the rest of the council and mayor wanna know as well. Uh, we put this, I put this list together uh, probably about a year ago when, before we got the, the money from the governor's office for the water line. Um, just to uh, highlight the, the top priority water and sewer projects to get an idea of what we were looking at funding wise. So, I went through and uh, updated, um, didn't update everything. Um, updated a couple of things primarily starting with in the water side. As you can see there, the water, Maryland thirty-one water main improvements. Um, well, as you know, we have um, uh, received three bids that we're processing. Um, if you look at the uh, construction estimate that GMB provided in July, uh, of two point nine five five million there. Um, all, all three of those bids on the construction end of things um, were, were higher than that. Um, but we um, they also added uh, ten percent for miscellaneous and fifteen percent contingency, GMB did. So when you add those numbers in, uh, you get, you get a total of uh, three million six hundred ninety-three thousand seven fifty-eight. So considering that, those, the, the, the bids were, are within that, within that range. Um, the other factors that we wanna look at, um, uh, con- uh, construction management, which GMB will do, is basing that as a percentage of the construction cost. Of a hundred and fifty thousand and then the inspection that you see there of one fifty-one eight seventy, that's an actual proposal. That's actual number from W B C M and I had originally had that number at uh, three hundred thousand. So, I think we're good overall, um, when you add everything up there. Uh, the total estimated cost is just under four million and we used uh, four million for the budget. Um, as you know, we got a Maryland Department of General Services grant of four million. Um, so once we get through the, the bid uh, process, uh, these numbers will adjust once we uh, choose, choose a contractor uh, to go, to go forward. But I think we're, we're looking pretty good on that project. Um, and as I mentioned before, um, we were expected to begin the spring of, spring of twenty-three. Um, Dana uh, did reach out to our contact with uh, Department of General Services um, to let them know where we are. And that we're gonna be awarding a contract in January and beginning construction in spring and asking, requesting what um, what type of documentation that we're gonna need. Uh, to, to provide them as we, as we uh, spend this, this money that, that we have for that. So I'm sure there's, there's gonna be some uh, documentation and, and record keeping. I'm basically treat, told Mike to treat it like a, a grant. So, uh, we've, we've reached out to them, so we haven't had, haven't gotten any direction along those lines, but we're looking into it. On the mainspring water main replacement, uh, the only thing that I changed from the last time, this is basically going from uh, uh, High Street thirty-one at Lambert Avenue. Where we're gonna do the new line out to the Bauer Sox mainspring. Um, the only thing that I added in there was uh, along the lines of what we did on the water main improvement project. I added in ten percent of um, uh, ten percent for miscellaneous and fifteen percent contingency. So that, that upped that, that project up to just under, under ten million. Again, that's just rough numbers, ballpark numbers, um, taking uh, fifteen thousand linear feet times uh, four hundred fifty dollars a foot to get construction cost. And then you also have design and permitting and then like I said, contingency and miscellaneous and the other construction management inspection. So just something to keep in note, keep in mind as we get in talking to this next, the third project on the, on the water side. Um, that if we get into um, developing other sources, uh, which I'll talk about here in a minute. Um, to bring other uh, water sources online that are closer to town, that this project, which as you can see is very, very expensive, may not be, may not be needed. Um, so, uh, just keep that in mind as we talk about this. Then lastly, on the water side, we had it, I changed this and updated it. Uh, it was uh, in as a water system evaluation a- at a hundred thousand. And we just basically expanded on the scope of, of this uh, to include, to keep the, keep this, the evaluation in there and I'll explain what that is in a minute. And then add in um, the other factors uh, that we're, uh, we're looking at, you know, evaluating flows and pressures and valves and other system components. Uh, water supply, master planning and exploration of additional water sources closer to town. Uh, updating and expanding our GIS system, which all plays into uh, what's, would be used as a, by an engineer to create a water model. Uh, that was the original kinda scope for that hundred thousand would be for modeling, uh, modeling the hydraulics of the system. Uh, Public Works, uh, as many of you know, have made many, many system evaluations, repairs, changes and upgrades over the last uh, a couple of year, a couple, three years. Um, I have some highlights just to, to mention a few. Um, and this proactive approach has been time and, and money well spent. Um, so we, we put a, an approximate number uh, on what we've invested already over the last couple of years of, of three hundred thousand. Um, in those, some of the highlights I mentioned were that um, we did repairs and upgrades to uh, Bauer Sox mainspring. We had uh, two leak repairs, uh, R O V inspection, vent replacement, cleaning and mixer installation and transducer replacement on the pedestal tank. We had skater system and control installation on the hillside wells. We brought the second well back online, installed a V F D, variable frequency drive. Um, check valve, new piping, new meter, stainless steel hardware and control and operation adjustments. And then with the various may, water main breaks that we've had, um, we've obviously done the repairs, but we've uh, installed, I think about six or seven maybe insertion valves. And those things, as you know, are very expensive, uh, but they, but they also provide uh, control, better control of, of the, the system, the water line system. Especially with the upcoming water main project. So, keeping some of the breakdown in here, like I said, we kept the, the system evaluation by an engineering would be like modeling purposes. We kept that at seventy-five to a hundred thousand. Lot, lot of the legwork, the GIS and stuff that needs, that all needs done before an engineering firm will do a water model of our system. Uh, water supply master planning, um, that's uh, looking at exploration of additional water sources. Um, assigned a contract with GMB uh, first of December for eighteen thousand to get started on that. We had a meeting with M D E out at uh, Rooks Meadow um, to see what's involved with bringing that back online. Um, so they're gonna be looking at the preliminary uh, legwork and, and, and uh, looking at what we need to do to bring that online. And then updating and expanding the GIS system. We had signed a contract back in June with, with GMB. Um, and they've gone through that money and then we did an additional uh, contract to uh, uh, keep that going. Uh, for an additional ten thousand six hundred ninety-three dollars uh, to continue and finish up that, that work on our GIS system, which I believe should finish that up. And then the cost for the additional water sources of bringing uh, Rooks Meadow back online, uh, Athley Ridge well, online. Uh, installing piping and treatments to draw water from Lehigh Quarry, drilling new wells. It's really unknown at this time, that's what we're really just getting into, uh, looking into and exploring. Uh, but as a placeholder, uh, I've, I've put um, a four million dollar number on there. Um, again, that will be adjusted as we go and we get more information and get more specifics and look more specifically at, at the projects. But back to that second project of water line out to mainspring at, let's just call it ten million for round numbers. You know, this option is, I think, a mu- is a, a better and cheaper uh, option to do. Um, uh, so just keep that in mind. Again, we don't have definitive numbers, but we don't really have uh, exact numbers on that replacement of that water line either. So what I did there was I um, did a total uh, for the three water projects, uh, including number two, which is the mainspring water main replacement. Um, that would put us at about um, four, lower fourteen million. And we've uh, already invested approximately uh, three hundred and forty-six thousand six seventy-eight over the last couple of years. That's um, the, the improvements, the, the work that uh, GMB is doing on um, uh, for the master plan, just getting started with that and the GIS. Um, work that they're, they're working on. And then I broke it down to um, uh, include the three projects, but did not include number two. And put in this exploration uh, of new uh, sources or closer sources. And you can see the difference um, that, that it makes um, in, in, in that, in that uh, total number. So it's that, definitely something that we need to continue and, 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 and continue to work with and, and get more definitive numbers. But I think it's, I think it's good planning to look at, and look at those, those options. So those are the three, the three um, the three water projects that we have and updated. Any, any questions, discussion on that, on the water side?
Down the road, five years, ten years, whenever some of this takes place, we find additional resources for water. And really don't have to strain um, the system out on Bauer Sox and Danning's. And I know you, you know, you have it going from eight inch to twelve inch line. But with it being that old and we had other resources to kinda eliminate some of the stress from that system. Would you look at possibly lining that system? That, that line?
That would kinda protect it from leaks in the future?
Yeah.
We didn't need to re, we didn't need to replace it?
That's certainly not. Uh, it's not cheap either.
No.
Probably be cheaper than replacing the whole thing.
Oh yeah.
You save a significant portion, the, the one benef, the one downside to that is you do need the water system offline. So before we can start talking about that, we would need to be able to um, sustain water.
Kind of backup system.
Yeah, all right.
Any other questions on the water?
Okay, so on the sewer side, um, we have a couple more projects, I believe there's five, six actually, one though, I don't, don't think we will do. Let me, I didn't do, uh, didn't really change much on that, uh, Blue Ridge Pump Station upgrade. To give you an update on that, we have uh, we did receive um, uh, ninety percent drawings uh, and specs. Uh, just uh, Monday, I believe it was this week. So we're gonna be taking a look at those and, and, and providing some comments. Um, the issue again that we're gonna be facing and, and, and starting to plan for is, is uh, material and equipment availability, especially with generators. They are, generators are, for whatever reason, are really, really backlogged. I'm talking twelve, twelve to fifteen months possibly for, to get a generator. Now you're talking large, larger generators for, for, for the pump station. So we're starting to uh, consider our options and how we want to, to uh, pursue that once we get plans ready to go. Um, so we've already started, been talking with uh, GMB about that. But nothing's really changed on the, the estimate or anything on that. Um, we're hoping that we have this uh, plans ready to go um, by the end of, of fiscal year twenty-three. Um, but again, it's gonna be dependent on material and equipment availability. Um, Athley Ridge Pump Station, it's still in there, uh, no change on that. At three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand, it's not quite the same size or uh, ex- expansive project as Blue Ridge. Um, we have the wastewater treatment plant in our preliminary engineering report, which GMB is working on. And they have uh, they submitted a draft P E R to M D E on August the twenty-third. And GMB is currently working back and forth with M D E on, on comments uh, that they've provided. And encountering with uh, with uh, responses to those. So that's, that's in the works and, and moving along. Then we have the uh, the actual wastewater treatment plant in our upgrade. Um, don't believe anything changed on this. No, um, as we know, um, January, in January of twenty-two, Governor Hogan earmarked uh, three million four hundred and thirty-four thousand two hundred and eighty-three dollars. Not sure where he came up with that exact number, but uh, for new ones or wastewater treatment plant upgrade. Um, so if you look at the numbers, um, again, where we use the estimates for, um, and we come up with a total cost of thirteen million five thirty. Including those, those uh, numbers you, or items you see above there. If you look at the, the, we used a thirty-five sixty-five split for funding, uh, I guess middle of that. Um, we think is in the ballpark with what GMB is telling us and um, then that's part of what they're negotiating and starting to work through with in the draft report. That'll, that'll iron out some of those uh, some of those percentages uh, that were eligible for. But if you take uh, thirty-five percent there for town cost, that puts us at four, four million seven thirty-five five hundred. And then if you take uh, into account the uh, what Governor Hogan earmarked, uh, the adjusted estimate town cost puts us at one, one point three million. So that's a, that's a pretty, pretty significant um, uh, decrease in, in uh, in cost for, for a project that large. So that's, that's the update on, on that. Uh, the sewer lining, uh, again, nothing's really changed on that. And that's the process where you go in and, and go manhole to manhole and use a liner of different, they have a couple of different kinds. Uh, resin or fiberglass and it can be used to cure via steam or U V or heat. A really good way to, to uh, to uh, extend the life of your sewer, as long as you don't have a capacity issue, uh, volume issue or anything like that. Uh, cause you do lose a little bit of circumference, okay, uh, capability of the pipe, but it's a great way of doing it. And we just looked at, came up with a, a pretty good estimate on the linear footage to do Old Town, which we feel is, is the older, the oldest section and the worst sections. And then just put a, a, a number per uh, sixty-five dollars a foot. So we kept that in, it's at six hundred and fifty thousand to do the whole, to do all of Old Town. Uh, that is again, a really good way to do it. Uh, a lot, lot, a lot less than, than traditional open cut and replacement, um, significantly less per linear foot. And um, again, the, to refresh your memory, the advantages to sewer lining, they reduce the cost. Um, there's no excavation, there're disruption to the pavement or traffic flow. Um, it's a long lasting product. Um, you know, the, when you, when you take, when you take, when you line a sewer, you're taking a lot of I N I, which is that last, last project. Out of the system, which, which really helps um, on, on the amount of, of sewer that's treated at the plant. It, it basically frees up capacity, reduces your treatment cost by eliminating I N I. So sewer lining is a very, a very good way to, to uh, uh, get basically new sewer at, at a good, at a good cost per foot. And then lastly, uh, the, an I N I, an inflow and infiltration study. Um, it's uh, like I said, it, it, it's, it's. Um, it's uh, like I said, it, it, it's, it's looks at um, to refresh your memory again, inflow is rainwater that gets into the sewer system via openings and manholes. Uh, illegal downspouts or storm drains. So basically from the surface. And then um, uh, infiltration is, is groundwater that gets into the sewer system underground via holes, joint failure, uh, cracks in, cracks in the pipe, things like that. Um, and INI can account for, you know, up to forty-five percent of your annual flows and depending on the, the severity of it at your plant. And so thus it eats up the, the plant capacity. So our plant, I pulled the three-year average for our plant, uh, our daily flow is, on three-year average is seventy-four thousand gallons per day. So if we use a conservative percentage of twenty-five percent INI, uh, that could be eighteen thousand, five hundred gallons per day of INI. Again, that's eighteen thousand, five hundred gallons that you could free up, uh, not being, a free up capacity that's not being treated at, at the plant. Um, so I've touched on that. It, it, it helps with uh, uh, the composition or makeup on the sewer increases the treatment. Um, in operational costs. Uh, um, so reducing that INI does just the opposite. It reduces cost and treatment and and uh, uh, frees up capacity. So um, I don't think we would, my opinion, I don't think we would pursue that project. I'd rather, it's estimated a hundred and fifty thousand. I'd rather take a hundred and fifty thousand and put it towards sewer lining. Um, to get the bet, you're going to get the benefit of it, you know, the same benefit from it. Um, so what I did was I put together uh, one, two, three, four, and five uh, totals. And you see there uh, that puts five sewer projects total at fifteen million, one hundred and ten thousand, six, ten. Uh, then I used, I put the number in there for uh, total of five projects with MDE funding for the E and R upgrade. Uh, that bumps it down to six million, three sixteen, one ten. And then looked at the combination of MDE funding and state funding for the water wastewater treatment plant that we got from the governor, drops that number down to two million, uh, eight hundred and eighty-one thousand, eight twenty-seven. Uh, again, I just, I, I've mentioned where we are, or our, our, our American Rescue Plan uh, act uh, fund balances of where we are with that, just to give you an idea there of where we are with that. So that's, that's a relook at the water and sewer project. Any questions on the sewer?
Nope. A lot to take in. Good update. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Gary, Gary, one question. Um, the, the generators, how many generators are needed? That you estimate?
We're, we're, we're thinking we need one at power socks and one at hillside, I believe. Don't know the exact sizes yet, but we're looking at that.
Do you know?
Like a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand.
It really depends on the Really depends on the size. Uh, Wayne could probably give us a better estimate on that. Um, they're, they're, I want to say, they're in the range of fifty to a hundred thousand, depending on the size.
We have the two uh, the two uh, pump stations that are about a million out of the million, three hundred thousand. So if, if we're talking one or two at, at a hundred thousand, we still have room in the ARPA money. Um, but if we start talking, you know, four, five, six, that's where it starts running out of ARPA money.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think.
Think based on size wise, I would think we would need, we would be in that kind of past.
And or any other kind of uh, funding for those we're looking into?
And hopefully Councilman Hoffman and I will know more after the briefing tomorrow from Senator Garden on earmarks for the next two years. Um, so Congress is passing both in Senate and the House earmarks for the next two years. So um, the next two years will be very important to be very aggressive. Um, so uh, I tried to reach out to Congressman Dutch Rubersberg, Rubersberg um, today. Uh, went on his website and tried to send a message, but it asked for my address and due the fact that the districts have changed. We're not in his district by New Windsor. First of the year, we will be. So I'll still find his email and just let him know that uh, we would uh, welcome a, a meeting with him if nothing else, or at least a phone call or two. So uh, we'll be doing what we can to bring in additional resources. And this is called not kicking the can down the road. So. Any other new business? Thank you, Gary.
Welcome.
Old business, employee handbook updates?
Yes, so this was discussed, discussed at the November work session and uh, based on comments from the mayor council, the changes were made and are highlighted, which you see there in front of you. So I think we've hit everything that you guys commented on and just wanted to get back to you. Get your okay on this.
Key is on the hybrid emergency situations. Not a normal practice or anything.
Right. Right.
Right.
By having this part of the manual, when, when everything's done, you'll bring it before us to approve?
At the overall, on the manual, yes. Um, I'd like to get your blessing in this part and that we can move forward and look at the rest of the uh, the manual, do it in sections.
Looks like you covered everything we talked.
The town may pay, so.
Right.
Right.
Yep. I don't have anything against it. Anybody else?
Nope.
Good. Everybody's good with it?
Okay, thank you.
And Lions Club Field, Reapers Baseball Club Agreement renewal. I had a few comments last meeting. And I've looked at it. Um, you know, Councilman Cornick said he's okay with it. Basically, it was an agreement where New Windsor with the Lions Club Field, I call it the Lions Club Field, I think everybody else does too, but um, they want sole uh, use it, use of it. And it's like, you know, number one, the town in Windsor will always remain the highest priority for use of it. That's our property. And then the rec council, even though they're not using it, they are, are residents, children that should have the rights to it. And then any outside, and so far, we, we're not seeing any problems with uh, the Reapers using it, you know, as, as they are. But everybody get a chance to read it. And I think it, I think you cleared everything up. I'm good with it.
Yep. It's good.
And I, I reached out, I, I reached out to Paul Burgie with Reaper, just sent a copy of this to him, talked with him as well. The only thing he got uh, is, is you see under two A and D, you know, that if, if the town actually field itself, council would use it, they, they would drag it, clean up any trash generated from these. Is that stuff that they're?
All right.
Yep.
All right, I'll get this signed and then I'll get him to sign it.
All right. Purchase a new dump truck update.
Okay.
Hey, just a quick update there. Public Works took three of the new, took on November thirtieth. And reminder, we're using the V plow out from the uh, old Ford dump truck, old Chevy dump truck. And Director Myers will be preparing an RFP for the dump bed, the salt box, and others uh, needed equipment for, for nice. So we have it in our possession.
Any other old business? Residents concerns? Michelle?
We have three. Mr. Crookshank.
All right. If you could sit over here by the microphone so you can be recorded, your name and address, please, sir?
And good evening.
Evening.
Alex Crookshank, three oh three Church Street, New Windsor. And uh, I'd like to address Deputy Calusi. I'd like to thank you for everything you've done for this town. And as everyone has said here, uh, when we had to replace Mark, um, who knew that we would get you? And it was fantastic. I'd like to take this moment, I'll keep this really short because we've been here for like two hours. I'm outraged by what's happened with Deputy Calusi. The middle school that used to be a public middle school is now valued at over eight million dollars and is leased to Springdale Academy. Periodically, since the school has been open, I've been walking my dogs over there, which has been years now. And I have contacted Deputy Calusi and other folks at the sheriff's office to report that doors and windows are open. And this has been going on for years. And it just seems to me that if you own a property and you lease it to someone, you would want it to be in good stewardship and they would lock the windows and the doors, especially since it's a school. But they haven't seen their way clear to do this. And since this incident has happened, I've walked my dogs over there and the windows are wide open. And it's raining. I think it says a lot about the character of the people who manage Springdale Academy. That we are losing Deputy Calusi because they've decided that they're not going to be good stewards of Carroll County property. And when this leases up, I think other people in the community are going to feel the same way. And they're going to go to the school board and the commissioners, and we're looking forward to getting a public school back on that property. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Michelle?
Thank you.
Peggy, um, Rick. Hi. So of course.
Name and, name and address, please.
Peggy Ricker, three fourteen Church Street. Of course, I agree with everybody about Deputy Calusi. He has gone so over and above beyond anything that we should expect from someone. Not only does he make us feel very safe, but he has planned and come through with events for seniors, for young people. Uh, I, you know, I don't have enough words to praise him. But I also want to say, although it's been very sweet and nice and, you know, we've all set our accolades and how much we care about Deputy Calusi, but I am really angry. I'm angry because of a complaint from Springdale that can affect all of us in this town. And I'm angry at the sheriff's office because if they took two seconds to put together all the benefits that we've received from Brian Calusi compared to what the hell has Springdale done for us. Hopefully they pay their property tax. But I don't know anything that they've done to really become part of our community. And I hope a lot of us come in January, when you say the sheriff is going to be here to voice our opinions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Michelle?
It's Sherry Thompson. Sherry Thompson, three South Farquhar Street, Union Bridge, Maryland. I'm here for two reasons. One, I want to invite anyone and ask you all to promote our New Year's Eve event that's being hosted by Dream Big Union Bridge. Uh, we'll have a twenty-minute firework display. It's a free family event. We have live music by Cash Town DJ uh, that'll play in between sets. We have a magician that'll be there from seven to nine. It's going to be a fun evening. And I wanted to just extend an invitation to everyone to come out um, and, and participate in that event. Again, it's totally free. And also to say how upset I am that we're losing Deputy Calusi because it's affecting Union Bridge as well. And our town has totally changed since he took over. And I can see that it's going to change right back to the way it used to be. So Brian, we are going to miss you. We appreciate everything you've done. And we're going to keep on serving our community with Brian at the helm.
Thank you. All right. Announcements. You had an announcement?
Um, that, well, you mentioned the, the book that Frank Badavich wrote, and he's not going to be talking the kind of talk that you ha- you mentioned, but I'll, we'll arrange that for you. But just so you all know, that this Saturday at the New Windsor Museum, we're going to have our annual Christmas tree ornament giveaway. So one per family. We have New Windsor themed Christmas ornaments. And while that is going on, Frank Badavich will be there. And he, as um, Mayor Rupe mentioned, wrote a book about New Windsor. And he just re, he edited and added, I think about a hundred new pictures. And he's going to be there signing the book, and they're only twenty dollars. And the proceeds go to the New Windsor Museum. So that's going to be this Saturday, the tenth, from ten to one. And I, I don't, Kalina sent out the, the reminder to all of us about the newsletter, but I just thought I'd put in a plug. If anybody has um, anything that's for the good of the community that they want put in the newsletter, the um, that's due to Kalina on the nineteenth of this month.
Thank you. Before I have a couple of announcements, Gary, you still there?
Yes.
I got two questions. One, I think Kevin's going to have to help me with. Um, I got short-term memory, it seems like tonight, but uh, on the water meter connections with the water line replacement, the meters will be taken out of inside the homes?
Yes, eventually.
Okay, because I have one tabs on the water meter in case it's running, he can, he can see it. But that will be eliminated?
Correct.
Okay. All right. And
The second part of that was whether the uh, the town was going to do any pipe replacement on the inside of the home?
That would be up to the property owner. Yeah.
Yes.
But you know, I don't know whether, you know, we can discuss this at a work session, whether or not uh, to keep things moving, whether or not the residents want to get together, you know, that'll be up to them to find a plumber, maybe a better, better pricing or something than, and, and maybe work better with the contractor. But that's not really our call to some degree, but we want to try to keep everything going smoothly. So just, just some food for thought there.
Yes, I.
Yeah, I, my idea of thoughts were that town would hire a plumber to, to go in residence after the walls were in place and do outside meters were in to remove the, the inside meters, great pipe, where the meter used to be. I think that part should be on the, on the town. But in terms of any other, any other piping changes or plumbing changes would be a residential issue.
Right. Thank you. Um, the New Windsor Lions Club uh, annual Christmas decoration uh, for doors and overall will be on December twenty-first. Um, first, they'll have first, second, and third prizes for the door and overall um, decorations. Twenty-five dollars for first place, fifteen for second place, ten dollars for third, and you get a sign in your front yard. So pretty cool for the Lions Club. So um, you heard about the Union Bridge Lions, or the Union Bridge uh, uh, events going on. And Christmas tree pickup will be January fifth, twelfth, and nineteenth. Anybody have any other announcements? If not, do I hear a motion for a German?
I'll make the motion.
I have a second.
You have a motion and a second for a German. All those in favor, sing by me, sing aye?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Happy Hanukkah, happy holidays, Merry Christmas. Thank you for coming.